We'll call the May first meeting of the Amory City Council to order and have the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Rasmussen, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Dunkinson?
Here.
Ben Blaircom?
Here.
Elkin?
Here.
Plannum?
Here.
Manner?
Here.
Thompson and Ben Summerlin are not here.
Okay. And then we have consent items. Council, have you looked at your consent items? If no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
To approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sordid. Item number one is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? Good. Number two is department head reports. Patty, we'll call you up first. You start at the top.
Everybody, I wanted to talk about the comprehensive plan and the local outdoor plan. I'm working with updating our process for acceptance of our comprehensive and local outdoor plan RFPs. I had solicited those already for both plans and they were due on Friday, April twenty-sixth at four. I pulled the RFPs back because I'm looking at doing a combined RFP in the near future based off the discussions that we have tonight. Emergency operations plan, review of the emergency operations plan is still taking place. I recently held a meeting with Mayor Rick Van Blaircom, Pat Cahill, Lisa McMahon, who is our Polk County Emergency Management Director, Darren Van Blaircom, Amory Medical Center, Dan Peters, our police chief, Chuck Thron, our fire chief, and Jeff Mahoney, our public works director. The team collectively met to review beats on the ground and who does what in any emergency that takes place in the city. We currently have code red in the city and encourage residents of the city to sign up. If you haven't done so, please do so. There's an app and it was instructions were in your last water sewer bill. So that's how you can get signed up for that and we'll continue to review the current plan and help. Hotel development, I heard from the individual today and they're going to be meeting this month with us to discuss plans moving forward with a possible development in that regard. So housing development, we're still working on a few developments and information will still be forthcoming on that. I just went to the league insurance spring conference. That was really a good conference. They always are. There's a lot of useful topics that I pulled from their trainings. One that really stuck out to me was let's a poll representative, Dave Bunkhauser. He discussed managing crisis events in small communities. He was a former police chief of Kiel, Wisconsin. And he gave information in case of a major event that could happen in Amory and it keeps me awake at night. I think about that. So that was really good and he gave some heartfelt and important information. We also discussed their tenure in the industry, which I don't know if you knew this or not, but they've been in business since eighteen ninety-eight and their insurance has been around since nineteen eighty-four and we received a dividend in the amount close to five thousand.
Wow.
Which is for participating in the league and being in there. So that's a nice little bonus. Terrace group, South Industrial Park land, a sale price is fifty-two thousand and we put on their best offer because I think that might draw more people in per acre through the terrace. And then we can hone in on selling that through published brochures. We actually updated the brochure. So check out the website and check our, our city website. It's more thorough and I gave them a lot more information that I think kind of explains more about the property. So capital improvement plan. We're all working, myself, staff and department heads on putting together the capital improvement plan for the city of Amory. It's a five-year plan. We have a meeting with Adam Bear, Bear Finance in the next few weeks and we should have a good plan in place coming months to prepare for the two thousand twenty-five budget and beyond. So University of Wisconsin Rural Entrepreneurial Venture. This is something that just got brought to me. I'm going to be working with the University of Wisconsin. We're going to try to get four other individuals to create a team to put together Wisconsin Rev Program, which stands for Rural Entrepreneurial Venture Program. The approach is a grow your own approach to this model and this model will help our community and impact all to flourish. So I'm going to try to keep everybody apprised of that process and give more detail, but it's free to our municipality. And I think it gets development going and helps jobs and all those other things. Community coordinator for marketing and promotional services. I took it upon myself, but I think it's probably a good move for now. We have an empty space downstairs, our old historical society space. And I thought that would be a good space for our new community marketing director to house her office. So the space, for a lack of a better term, is well, it's a small storage area. Currently, her contract runs through the end of two thousand twenty-four. But when the contract resumes, I'll be working on her with a lease agreement with these because we do that right now with AEDC. We, we charge them fees for using that area in the city. So it was vacant and it made sense to house in the city center building. If the contract does not contain, the space will revert back to empty space in our current city center building. Any questions?
Been busy. Thank you. Library, you're up next. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't want to get this. Taylor, we'll take you for next.
Usually we go down the line.
Yeah, well, I don't want to get too complacent, you know.
As you can see, based off of the consent agenda items, it has been a busy month with all the minutes that we've had with meetings. In April, we also hosted our first election of the year. We actually had a pretty good turnout. We had seven hundred and fifty-eight voters between what actually came in person and the ones that cast absentee ballots. I have finished submitting all of my election stuff to the state, checked off my last checkmark and now I just have some follow-up maintenance to do after that election. Our next election won't be until August thirteenth. So we've got some time at least. In April, we also completed utility billing for the first quarter. So meters were read at the end of the quarter and then bills went out in the middle of April. Everybody's utility bills are due back on May fifteenth. So please send those in so you can avoid late charges. Um, last week, the auditors were in the process of conducting their, their audit, I guess, of our files, the actual looking at of our stuff. They've been, they've had it, but it was their week to look at it. None of them actually came in person. It was a virtual audit. So I spent the week providing them with information that they requested and getting them what they needed and able to complete our audit. And they've helped me with several things this year also to get all of our financial stuff kind of tied up and make sure that we're moving the most effective way as possible. I've also been working on getting reports submitted to the Department of Revenue. There was a few of them due today for our room tax and our expenditure restraint and things like that. The D R actually is a really good website because when you log in, it tells you what due dates are coming up. So I can see what's coming up for the rest of the year at this point. That's out there. More will be added, but. And then last week, we sent out liquor license packets. They were either mailed or at least to drop them off at the businesses that needed them. Liquor license packets are going to be due back on May twenty-first. That way I have time to, I'm not sure, put them on the first, now that we have two council meetings. I may wait till the second June council meeting just to give us some more time because the state passed a new law for liquor licenses and they changed all of our forms. So this will be the first time that these business owners are seeing these particular forms. They have done away with the easy renewal form and now everybody has to fill out the whole application this time around. Hopefully next year we can go back to having that renewal form, but they needed to add some fields based off of the new legislation. We also had Lisa, our new deputy clerk treasurer started. So I've been spending a lot of time trying to get her trained in on the key areas that she's going to be taking over and needs to know and things like that. She went through utility billing with me. She's been going through a lot of different things with me and things like that. And she's been doing a great job of taking on things when I didn't necessarily have time to sit with her and working through them on our own and then I can check them back. So it's been working out really well. And then with the warmer weather, we've had a big uptick suddenly in permits because everybody wants to build decks and fences and everything else under the sun. So we've had an uptick in our permitting and so I think it's going to be a decent year for building based off of what I've seen come in so far. Any questions? All right.
Thank Taylor. And now we will have the library because I want to hear about this. No longer in suspense.
Thanks, everyone. So just a few building updates. We've got our electrical contractor who is going to come out and run the electric and the internet in preparation for our book locker, which should be delivered towards the beginning of June. Then we'll take a little time to actually learn how to use it so that it's smooth and then we'll open it up to the public. So really soon. We're really excited about that. I want to share that Emma Novak, our youth services librarian, was invited to present at an Eau Claire Library Youth Services Workshop. And she talked about her success with teen programming because she's, she's causing quite stir in the youth services arena because she's getting ten, fifteen, twenty teens to come to her programs and everybody wants to know what's the trick. So since we've last met, the library had seven adult programs, three all ages programs, two teens only programs and five children's programs with an attendance of three hundred and fourteen. Over eighty people who came to our tortured poets department relief party and poetry party, which was a raging success. We invited kids to come in, listen to the music, but it was a sneaky way of getting them exposed to the idea that songs are poetry, they're sung and that anybody can write poetry. And we taught them about American poets and we sent them home a poetry notebook so that maybe they start writing their own poetry. And it was a great time. It was a great time. They had a lot of fun. Emma and I went last week to the Amory School District four K orientation. So we got to meet with all of the parents and all of the little ones who are just entering the school district, which is really fun and told them about all the early literacy programs that we have, how we can support them during the summer and if they need any help with their readers, that we have all kinds of resources that we can share with them. We really enjoy working with the school district. So that was just another example. Trevor was invited to speak to a local Alzheimer's group at the community center to talk about the memory-related illness resources that we have, from resource kits to books and materials. This week, every single class in the intermediate school is coming through the library. So we've been really busy with bringing kids in, showing them where things are, telling them what we have to offer and again, kind of putting the bug in their ear that summer reading program is coming up. Next week, it's the elementary school. Then getting to what Rick wanted to talk about, all of the performances for the summer reading program have been booked. So you all have copies and we'll be releasing it on our website soon. But we've had seven different programs that are fun. We sneak some education in, of course. The snakes are coming back. So if you're worried about that, make sure you're not here that day. We've also got the bug guy coming and the friends of the library very generously sponsored it with two thousand dollars worth of these programs for us. They do that every year. So they paid for five out of the seven programs that were offered. So big thanks to the friends. And then for my last bit, I just want to share why summer reading is so important. I know many of you have heard me do this speech before, but I'm really passionate about it. Summer reading isn't just fun and games for the kids. We try to bring them here under the guise of this is fun and these are games. But we really want to stop the summer slide. You've probably all heard people talk about that. And I just had a few facts to share with you. So during the school year, children of all income levels move along at the same pace. They're all improving their knowledge, expanding their knowledge and doing well on the same pace. But data shows that over the summer, children that are less advantaged start to fall behind. They start to lose some of what they've learned before. Sometimes they backslide even more. But middle and upper income, more advantaged kids, they're not losing their skills or their reading or their math or their academic achievements. So the real problem with that is that it's cumulative. The kids that fall behind, once you fall behind, you never catch up. So by the time that kids have finished sixth grade, the children who are losing those reading skills over the summer have lost two years' worth of their education behind their classmates and they're shown to never catch up. So even though we've got bugs and snakes and fun parties, what we're really trying to do is engage these kids, get them to read, get them to think, get them to keep practicing what they've been learning during the school year. So that's why we make such a huge effort to invite everyone to join summer reading. So you all are invited. Any of the kids in your lives are invited. Please share what you've heard today and it's a really simple signup program and kids earn rewards for reading. Any questions about that?
Very good. Thank you. Dan.
Thank you.
Looking at third cage, we had thirty-one site patients for the month of April, which is up compared to the last couple of months. So whether it's getting better, the guys are getting some tickets. We did have thirty incident reports that we compiled. Two of them were a use of force that were through assisting the sheriff's department. And both incidents of the use of force were use of the taser. The first one was on April eighth. Officer Harris and myself were mutually requested by the sheriff's department to an address just outside the city for an out of control fourteen-year-old. Officer Harris did use the taser on the fourteen-year-old. The fourteen-year-old ended up falling down a flight of stairs that Officer Harris didn't see at the time. And he, the fourteen-year-old sustained some serious injuries that he was flown through regent afterwards. So, but he's doing better and he's back home. The same day or technically the next morning, we had the second taser incident with an assist with the county out near Clear Lake. And that subject had threatened another person with a knife and I believe he also released five hundred cows from a farm that they had some issues with. But in the time that they found him out in a cornfield, they ended up fighting with them. Both the deputy and Officer Hope saved the subject. They ended up pepper spraying him. The subject ended up getting on the hood of our squad truck. They released the canine after him and between the guy and the canine, they scratched the hood of the truck pretty bad. But we were fortunate enough to get it buffed out for five hundred and forty-three dollars, which hopefully will get reimbursed for, but I'm not going to.
Wait your breath, so.
But most of the scratches did come out. So it's, it was pretty bad, but it's got cleared up. So. Few other things that we had going on, just at the end of March, Officer Presley went to a peer support group for mental health of law enforcement officers. So there's one more training that we'd like to get into to start being an actual peer support person for the department. That's, the county also has a peer support group. So it's one of the programs that the state just did some legislation on for peer support. April seventeenth and eighteenth, I was in Green Bay at the Northeastern Wisconsin Technical College for grant writing course. And then yesterday Heather went to the same technical college for grant writing implementation. So she went already to grant writing school, but this will be for all the reports and stuff after you're awarded a grant, what you have to do is what she went to yesterday. We also participated in the four K registration of the elementary school. We were handing out crayons, some coloring flyers, stickers, stuff like that. And we're also have the kids doing a coloring contest that whoever the winners are, they're going to get to go with the chief to Ellie's for some ice cream. So. About to have it turned in by the fifteenth. Sam Mahoney is ready to graduate May twenty-second from Chapo Valley Technical College. And then he'll be able to start field training, we believe, the next week. We're going to give him a couple of days to kind of do some things and then he'll be here. Our other person, Cole Stanton, he's not quite hired yet because we're still doing the background with him. But he's already in the part-time recruit school and he'll finish in September. So we just got to get a few more things with him done, like his psyche, values, drug test and his physical before we sign him on with the department. We did get, or we, we, I shouldn't say. Get it, but we are working on a cops grant. But through that cops grant, it would be an additional position, not, it wouldn't fulfill a current position. It has to be an additional position. Yeah. And we were looking at the SRO position. So I'm going to start conversations with Dr. Derppler next week. I don't know if we're going to get this grant done in time to get it submitted for this year because it has to be done by June sixth and then the final draft has to be done by June. June twelfth. And what that would be, it's the wording's kind of weird, but it'd be a thirty-six month funded position. And then the next year or two years would have to be fully funded between the city and the school. For the three years, they would only award us up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but that's over the three years, not, you don't get a hundred and twenty-five each. It's a hundred and twenty-five overall. The minimum match would be twenty-five percent by the city and the school. So something for you guys to think about because we can't go ahead with anything until we have talks and decide if we're going to go with it or not. So. Then the last thing I have is we are participating in the traffic grant through Polk County, the sheriff's department. I've been going out doing extra shifts. I know there's some concerns about me working on overtime. But that, all that funding is totally refunded by the state if I do work overtime shifts. So I don't know how the council feels about it, but I'm trying to get the guys to see the chief out, working extra shifts to get them to start working some extra shifts with this grant money because the grant goes, they'll either, the money runs out or September.
You've also been busy.
Yeah.
Try and be careful out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Charles.
Just wanted to know, are you writing your future recruit later in the?
Start pretty early too.
Yeah, pretty early. Even so far, we've had a hundred and sixty-seven combined first responder fire calls in here. Which is right about normal. Airboat update is that Gale Marine has the engine. They're waiting for the headers for the exhaust. They said the headers were shipped. So, and they should have now or the end of this week. As soon as it gets put on, they'll have it up here. So all they've got so far. Going on a year. So we need it. Last month, I told you I was going to get repairs done that were needed on the ladder truck. I have an estimate of the cost of the repairs that were completed. The costs so far are fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. More repairs were done after that. The brake canisters were leaking so bad on the air compressor of the truck that the compressor couldn't keep up with the brakes and it got stuck in the front parking lot of the fire station. And they had to get another air compressor out there to pump up the brakes to get the truck to move. So those were replaced. So yeah, and they, when they were placed, they said that they were original nineteen ninety-two. And then he also said that the tires are twenty-three years old. And, but all the pump tests were done on all the engines. So. But so, yeah, so. As far as I know, he is completed with, except for he's got waterway sealed. He's got to put in. And those we have to get from Pierce themselves. And I called Kevin Pomsel from Pierce and he's going to be shipping them here shortly. So once we get them, then those will get put in. Myself and six other firefighters attended the storm spotters class. I just want the community to know that the storm shelter is in the basement of the library. In any event, in the event of a tornado that is going to affect Amory, the storm shelter will be open. If a tornado warning is meant for Polk County and does not affect Amory, it will not be open. Because they have a tendency to see if there's a tornado very far north of Polk County that we get paged and sorry, we're off. We, we won't open it. So please pay attention to the weather, the local news or Twin Cities news. And I did ask him too. I said, so which, for our area, which is better, either Minnesota or Eau Claire? He goes, you're right in the middle. So he says, you either see what's coming or what's going. So he said that either one of will be good. By the way, and just so you know that the main entrance from the, on the library is where you should come in and be north side of this Amory city center. Should, we'll have somebody there to unlock the door and get you in the basement. And I am, was told by Jeff last year that in case of a power failure, that that elevator does work for handicap people. So if you're handicapped, we should still be able to get you down into the storm spotter area or storm shelter area. Sorry. We had three firefighters go to Wisconsin State Firefighter Conference down in Overland Stevens Point. And we had to attend the conference with a right slate. So they're still being trained. This is a good thing. So. That's more all I got. Any questions?
Thank you, Josh.
Last and least. Well, as everybody knows, we spent a lot of time this month in the parks. Bathrooms are going, campsites up, docks are all in, everything pretty much ready to go there. The dump will be open Saturday. That'll be first and third Saturday, nine to noon for brush, leave, you know, compost, whatever you got. We have more sewer backups, just a reminder. Wet wipes, don't flush. Again, what it was, all the hydrants and mains have been flushed for the season. Proo's out. Running around, we had to turn off all the waters and then turn around, turn off. So that takes, you know, a couple, three days. All due to payments. What else we got? All the list station pumps were pulled, all the pumps at the sewer plant were pulled, maintenance gone through. Everything's good there. We also got the salt shed, good to go up, probably starting on it tomorrow. So we built a pad there. So that's all ready to go. Masons on city hall, we got the police stairwell fixed up, all the ceiling tiles are repaired. Roof leaking. And then the guys bone all on the creek again. People around, just got the creek in your backyard, don't throw your stuff in the creek. Not too complicated. And your desk will be downstairs, April. Any questions?
Jeff, I have a question. So when we have in the springtime when we have heavy rainfall and people's yards turn into a lake or they get water in their basement and they have a sump pump, is it okay for them to pump their standing water out into the street?
It's supposed to go, so we can't really stop it, you know, because if it's in your yard, yard's wet. If we do have some, they're called, they're kind of raining, they are, but they're French drains. There's two of them in town that we've let, one goes into the storm system that's preferred and one does go into the street. But a lot of people have something, even on Riverside, they have to come into the street. You know, all along Riverside, we have left them in the street because there's nowhere else for it to go.
Would you prefer then that people contact you?
Yeah, just let us kind of know what's going on.
If they have that going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd rather have it in the streets than in the sewer.
Okay.
You know, we'll just head to the storm bridge eventually anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll give them your number.
Thank you.
Item number three is.
Item number three, historical society contribution. I don't know if anybody, no one's here from the historical society, but we heard the presentation two weeks ago. A donation from the city is. Part of the contingency for them to access a couple of more, couple more grants that would pretty much put them over the top. I don't think it puts them over the top, but it gets them a lot closer. Um, so their suggested amount that they came up with or told me about was five thousand dollars. Now you have it.
So, do we, do we have, um, any thoughts on where we could obtain that, if that's, uh, not in the budget?
Well, we have, there are several, several things, we have money from the sale of, uh. The Jorgensen Field. Uh, that would accommodate that, we also have a sale pending on the Soldier's Field. And, uh, that could come out of either one of those spots, they're both designated for Parks and Rec. Um, and obviously, some of it, some of the Jorgensen money has already been committed for, uh, pickleball courts. Uh, but, uh, there's still a substantial pool or so, five thousand dollars could very easily come out of that pool.
And that's my understanding that this is kind of what they're asking for, is it a one-time?
Yeah.
Type of donation, and this would not be something that was ongoing?
No, that's a one-time donation, so.
It would help them obtain additional funding?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm very much in favor of making a donation to the Historical Society, I think we owe it to our town in general. And to those people who have been doing all the work to keep our history intact, and I, we definitely owe it to them, so. Um, in that case, I would make a motion to make a donation to the Historical Society in the amount of five thousand dollars that we would take from either of the. Proceeds from either one of the property sales that we've been coming up.
I would second that, and then if you ask a comment.
I would like to add.
Okay, I, I also, um. Knowing that this was possibly coming up, I had spoken to Jorgensen family. And Connie said that they would, it could be very appropriate to do that to support the Historical Society, so, not that we need permission. But I think it's important to know, um, that we're talking to the people who are involved in, in, in making sure that we're. Um, above board with what we're doing for, for them and for what their money's gonna be doing too. There's that.
Any other comments? Motion is made and seconded to make a five thousand dollar one-time donation to the Amory Historical Society. Uh, to be used to, to reduce their indebtedness. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Pickleball temporary courts.
Good evening again, Dave Anderson from Pickleball Group. Uh, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed, uh, asked permission for a temporary site for pickleball, since we are snowbirds. Are coming back now, and it is May, and they're looking for a place to play in town. So we're looking for a temporary place in town, we have, uh, been in contact with some other towns, areas that have groups. And they said, they're welcome to come, but they're driving away, so we're still looking for someplace in town, and, um. Most logical, the best place so far has been the North Park Tennis Courts. So we're seeking permission to use that two or three times a week, that we need to play Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays in the mornings. And, uh, to continue that, we just wanted to make sure we have permission to use the courts, and then there would be the, the issue of getting lines. We talked about painting lines, taping lines, and possibly even chalking lines, so we got those issues.
Not, not, not to, not to rain on your parade, but I think Parks and Rec has something to weigh in with that.
Well, a couple of things, um, if that is done with the, um, the tennis courts there. Can they be the same direction as the courts are played now?
Yes.
Okay, so that the main fencing then could just be raised or lowered?
So that, we're gonna, we're gonna have touch net at all.
Net at all, okay.
Yeah, because the net's what we'll do, is we'll bring our own nets in, we'll just have temporary nets, bring it in that day, take them out. Nothing can be left there, just, uh, just either possibly tape or chalk, which will wash away in the first, next rain.
Right, and the tape or the chalk, is that your expenses?
It's our expense, anything can be at our expense, even if we got permission to paint lines on there, we would do that at our expense. There's no expense to the city right now, it's just that, uh. You know, if you see a bunch of senior citizens out there with children's sidewalks, um, talking, you kind of wonder why.
Okay.
Just putting down lines for pickleball.
Okay, the other request from the Arts and Parks Committee is that anything further with pickleball goes through that committee first, before it goes to anything at the city council.
Okay.
Okay, so.
This comes right.
I think that was all we had.
Clarify, so, are you planning to play east and west with your courts?
Maybe going north and south.
Okay.
So you can have courts on both sides.
Of the tennis.
Of the tennis net, and then the tennis nets would be a barrier for balls going back and forth, just like it was at, at South Courts.
Okay, well, I think that's good clarification to have, so you're planning to have like four courts of pickleball playing at a time, potentially?
We, we're gonna start with two and see how many people come, we can put four, but actually, there's plenty of room, we can get six courts in there.
Okay.
Um, but we're gonna start with two and if permission is granted, of course, start with two and then, uh, go to three or four and. See how many people are willing to chalk lines down.
I just to comment, if you get RAS out there to. And I want to be notified ahead of time, so I can watch.
Is there any plans for?
Okay.
Is there any signage at the court, which indicates like hours that it's open, I'm actually looking more at Jeff?
I, it's just open during the regular, always.
Okay, would it be, um. Would it be, I, I feel like it might be a good idea to put some sort of a temporary signage up there, indicating that there's a, a. Club that, you know, intends on using the court, not for tennis, but for pickleball, um, these days during these times. Because what would, what would you do if someone were to be playing tennis and you folks pull on up, you're gonna kick them off?
Well, that was gonna be part of the discussion. Pickleball people usually play from eight in the morning to eleven in the morning. I don't.
Really good time to play tennis, because it's nice and cool. I'm not a tennis player, so I'm just, playing devil's advocate.
What we, what we see, yeah, exactly, well, you know, exactly, um. And no offense, it's just that, that those tennis courts really don't get used for tennis much at all, only in the evenings. And there's eight really nice tennis courts out at the high school that are much better than the circus out here at North Park. So that actual tennis players, people who want to play tennis, usually always go to the high schools. Unless you're the Olsons and the Stewarts who live up on Second and Arlington, they walk down to the courts there.
So do you think?
I don't, I don't believe it's gonna be an issue.
Would there be a, a problem with, uh, because you play three days a week, right?
We have in the past, but if that's not permitted, we could go to two days a week, I just, uh. It would be advantageous to put a sign up saying, yes, I agree with that, and that, you know, pickleball people have been granted permission to use this at such a.
From eight till eleven, three days a week, the, yes, I mean.
Yeah, if it involves setting things up.
Uh, otherwise.
Should have sort of a reservation.
Right. Otherwise, I mean, if you go, if you want to play tennis and you go up there and somebody's already on the cart, you're stuck in it, I mean, it isn't like, you're just totally. Uh, ban, you know, taking the thing over, and, and if somebody is playing tennis in the morning and they say, well. We got one more game to go and we started here at six-thirty in the AM, I'm assuming they'll probably get, uh, you know, cut some slack. Either that or Dan will be up visiting you guys, so.
Well, I think there does need to be a sign erected somehow. That pickleball has it those three days a week.
Yeah.
And give it from seven AM to noon, or seven to eleven, if you're always down to eight by eleven. So that there's time to get set up and get out of there, and that, that way you guys would have, you know, the, the, the full course reserved for what you're gonna do.
And hopefully, Jeff, uh, you want to chime in as to what the program is with the Monarch?
Well, uh, they're shooting bird end of May, early June, but first later down, then they gotta wait like twenty days, whatever. I'm gonna shape, I need to take a step late, but you're with weather. And the only thing I would ask, if you do the court, is stay away from the paint, it'll give paint permanent, or not permanent, but it'll be there for a while. We put it paper.
Right. Okay, it's gotta be the tape or chalk.
That's like, yeah, we, uh, we went over the cost of the other meetings, so we're, we're discussing everything, you know. It's cheap too, so.
Jeff, can you get a sign to that effect?
I'll pretend I'm a nurse.
There you are.
Yeah.
I just have one clarifying question, so, if you are using the tennis courts those mornings, the schools are open for public use at any time in the morning, is that correct? Okay.
Usually when school's out, yeah.
Do they have tennis lessons there for summer school in June that would? I'm just trying to think of the tennis people's side and the Parks and Rec things that they brought up in their meeting. Because they were just concerned of the tennis people being kicked out of the tennis courts during morning hours.
Well, they, if I can add what information.
Yes.
Danielle Jolson, um, runs a, uh, camp, if you will. I think three weeks in June, in the mornings, on the, on the courts at the school.
Okay.
Okay, so that would, during those three weeks, that would pretty much leave tennis players out in the lurch. Other than that, those high school, those high school courts are open all the time, I've never seen anybody turned away. Uh, there's eight courts there and I. There are not all that many tennis players left.
I'm just raising the questions that were raised to me and the information that was asked of me to present, so.
Well, it's your pleasure.
Well, I said that we give them approval Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and second, seven AM until eleven, get a sign put up.
They want it eight to eleven, that's right.
Well, they're gonna need to put signs, they're taping and chalking or whatever.
Okay.
And photos, as I understand. Yeah, I said that we give them the approval to do that. So I make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the three-day, at three half-days, uh, reservation for the tennis courts. For the pickleball for.
I don't think we need to make a motion in regards to that, I think if we just give them verbal permission to do it, because if. I'm still questioning that other people might be wanting to use those courts, and this is not anything city-sponsored. And if somebody else is wanting to use those courts, whoever's there first gets first dibs.
Um, however, we do re, we do reserve, uh, campsites, we, we reserve.
They're officially reserved.
And.
Exactly.
The courts are not something that we reserve, we do shelters and we do.
Campsites and. Big big tables.
The tennis courts is not something that we historically.
But that's not cast in stone that we can't do that either.
It is not, but we would have to add something to our website on it, it would become a universal thing across the board, that we'd be taking reservations for the tennis courts, which they don't. Just from my, from my perspective of having reserved things.
From my perspective, if we don't do it officially. I think we're inviting, inviting controversy, if it's officially done. We're talking about, this is May, and it is the first of May, so maybe six weeks. If we're, pardon? Eight weeks, okay.
Well, there's just other things to be done after that.
So we're talking at least another month after that for paying.
And we have a motion on the floor, seconded. So this is under the heading of discussion.
Um, well, there's, there's no, there's no time limit on, along.
No.
It's, this, this is four, so.
I would like to see it set up for the three days a week, and if that becomes a problem, we get complaints from tennis players, we can back it down to two days a week or something.
Would you like to put an end date on your motion though, so that it's not a motion that's impacting next summer and the summer after? Because as it's written right now, it's just Monday, that one, Monday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seven AM to eleven AM, there's no end date on this.
Why don't you just?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four season?
Just twenty twenty-four season. I, that's not my motion, that's, somebody has to amend the motion.
Add that to the motion, please.
Okay, and do you second?
Mr. Roberts just rolled over, by the way. All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The affirmative has it by a three to one vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the mural on the south exterior wall of Ruby May's treasure.
I'm Nancy Anderson, and my husband and I own Ruby May's treasures, which is at one-eleven Keller Avenue North. And for many years, I'm not sure if it's twenty or thirty years, there had been a mural on the south side of the building. My understanding is, I believe there may be some high school art class that had a mural. And, uh, last summer, I believe a panel fell off, and the city removed the mural. And we feel that it's really important to have that mural, I think that it's, um. It's been, uh, kind of a landmark of the town, and I think it's a benefit to have that for tourists that come through town. And also for neighboring towns as they come through. Um, and so we have been working with Jameson Signs to come up with a new mural design. And I think you may have received that through. Um, and so, um. We have been, um, we went through the Arts, Parks and Rec Committee already. And so they said that we should come here. Uh, we are trying to fund it without using the city's money to fund it, we've got some money that the community club has. And we're looking at other ways to put money together to fund it. What we would like from the city is to repair the structure that's up there and to, um. Place the new mural up there, so we're looking for just labor, not mo, money to do it. We want to make sure that the, that it, that it's done correctly, so it won't fall down, and that it's secure. And so that's all that we're asking from the city.
I'm not really crazy about blasting concrete anchors into somebody's building personally, but we'll do it. So you know, that's my thought, you know, I have no problem doing it, I guess it makes me nervous, that whole break. So you know, that's my thought. You know, I have no problem doing it. I guess it makes me nervous. That whole brick.
You better off drilling it and putting anchors in.
But you have to, you know, even then.
It's soft. Old brick and soft mortar.
I know. Yeah, I think a lot of the structure is still there. I have no idea how strong it is. I, I'm not going up there.
It's just the actual plywood that he brought it with.
Yeah.
Painted out plywood and plywood, you know, brought it way over here.
And the framing, a lot of it is still there. I think there's some broken pieces and I'm not sure.
Pull that off of there because it kind of blasted into it. That's why we didn't take it off. But I don't, you know, I have no problem doing it, so. Liability end of it.
I just don't know how else we're gonna get the mural back.
Well, I think it's, you know, you don't wanna paint it on the side of your building, cause that, that's definitely a a lot bigger maintenance issue.
Well, and we're, we're having the sign made out of vinyl and it's gonna be, you know, lighter weight. And, um, it's not gonna be on plywood. Uh, and it's gonna last for a long time, so hopefully in real time, we won't have to do it again.
Does Tim have any suggestions as to how to mount it up there? I mean, could, could you use the existing frame that's there?
That's what our hope is, yes, is to just repair the pieces that are missing and use the existing frame.
Okay. And to just make it the.
The same size. Yeah, exactly, yes.
That way you're not hopefully digging or drilling anything for it to the.
Right, right.
Have you been up there, Jeff? I want you to look at the screen.
There's a lot of it. If you look, there's a lot of, there's a lot of it up there.
And is it in good enough shape to stay up there?
Is there a type of MOU or something that could be done or city being additionally insured? Or something like that? Or any, you know, the city crew, you know, accidentally damages their building?
Just talking about a, just a simple agreement that says, if something breaks because of this, it's not a liability for the city. I mean, that would be worst case. Isn't that, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so memo of understanding. Probably safer, make sure that. Yeah, and I understand what you're.
It wouldn't be that big a deal.
No.
Hold harmless or whatever the proper.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that it's.
Yes, yes, I mean, I don't think we're worried about the wall falling down or anything.
Well, with those old buildings, it could be, you know, one, one thing breaks a little bit and then if you, by the time you're done, it's. Who knows? Okay, so if we can work something like that out. Something simple.
That you're looking into doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we just wanna replace what was there. We think it's really important, just like the one that's in front of our building.
And then we just ask Jeff, who are you gonna send up there? Okay, okay.
So we have approval, but you'll just look into, uh, the.
A simple, yeah, a simple hold harmless or something.
I think Patty can come out, unless you wanna vote on it. I think Patty can come up with a, something that takes care of the liability and if Jeff's a little cautious, so he don't break his leg going up there, we should do a say. Okay?
Okay.
Enough? All right. Item number six, sewer rate presentation.
Yes, we've got Brian Kramer from LRS. And you'll hear him, we'll listen to him, but, um, this came to be because of our recent increase to what the costs are going to be. So we have to look logically at looking at the sewer rates. I mean, it costs more. We have to look at what is going to cost proceeded. So he's going to give us some options and kind of go over that with everybody, so. I'll let you talk, Brian.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, I did see that it looked like you had our presentation in your packet materials. Um, so I'll walk through that presentation verbally unless, um, you want me to share my screen at any point, I can certainly do that as well. So.
You share your screen just so it's in the recording and people watch it on YouTube.
Sure. Uh, would you mind making me a co-host or whatever it's called? I forget what Zoom calls it.
You should be good now.
Okay.
Are they, was he on this screen now?
No.
No, you're just gonna have to look at your, your copies. None of that's, nothing took down.
For anybody that wants to, and it'll be in the recording.
The stuff, no, it's in, um, the email. Just make sure, make sure that we know what page you're on, so.
Yep, yep, I'll, uh, make sure to verbally, uh, point, point your eyes in the right direction.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, as Patty kinda set the stage, the, uh, project was bid, so kind of moving to the first page past the title page, the project was bid. Um, since the project costs came back materially different than what we had, uh, shown in twenty twenty three, um, we wanted to update the sewer rate adjustments necessary to close on the loan. So we'll kind of walk through, um, what the changes are throughout this presentation, as well as what our recommendations would be for the resulting changes to sewer rates and then some options as well. So I just wanna point out that tonight, um, your hand is not forced to make a decision. So, uh, there is some information in terms of alternatives here tonight to which we could speak to at a future, uh, council meeting as well, if you'd like to. So I just kind of wanted to set that stage. I will repeat that later as well, but, um, as a reminder, our process is, we wanna kind of project out into the future and make sure that you're fiscally sustainable, not just solve for the minimum as well. So we outline our process, you know, on page two in the last kind of blue box, um, there that was in your packet. So beyond that, we will go to page three. The title of that slide is sewer rates historical implementation. So before the study, uh, done last year, uh, the last sewer rate adjustment went into effect January first, twenty seventeen, which was a flat one percent increase to the sewer rates. Our twenty twenty three recommendation was a series of adjustments to take care of the estimated project costs at that point. Um, so it was a ten one, twenty twenty three or October first, twenty twenty three, flat thirty three and a half percent adjustment. Then beyond that point, there were eight and a half percent adjustments going forward to the first principal payment, which is expected to start twenty twenty six. The reason for this is this loan program works as a draw loan, meaning as you go through construction, you submit your pay request to the state. The state then disperses those funds to the city. And you do not start, you start interest once you start, you know, you close on your loan and you're making these disbursements, so the interest payments will start. But the big payments don't start until what's called substantial completion or essentially ninety five percent of the project being complete. So you have some runway here that, um, you could adjust rates up until that point. Um, so last year, what was presented was um, the larger increase first and then smaller increases leading to the twenty twenty six principal payment. Uh, the cumulative adjustment at the time, based off of estimated project cost, was a seventy and a half percent adjustment to sewer rates. The reason for this is these will be taken out as sewer revenue bonds. Therefore, you pledge revenues of the sewer system and you have to prove that you have enough revenues, net cash expenses in order to pay your debt service. So the math all remains the same. However, the math is increased because project costs have increased, which we'll get to on a future slide. Moving forward, the next slide, which is, uh, labeled at the top, uh, WWTP or wastewater treatment plant project bid. Um, the first half of this slide identifies what we were using as the working assumption for costs provided by, you know, the engineer at that time was nine million, three hundred eighty one thousand. So that's what we were solving to, to get to the estimated loan payment. Understanding as well, there were grant components of that, both CDBG grants and program grants through this loan program. Now, the total costs have nearly doubled, going to seventeen point four million. The other item as well is there's no CDBG grant. So I kind of have the comparison of the breakouts um, between, uh, the project costs and the years in which, you know, the anticipated expenditures are to happen. Um, so you can kind of see that breakout. So, um, ultimately, uh, slightly less di- uh, grant funding and much more revenue bond funding. So the difference in the revenue bond total amount went from six million to fourteen point seven million. As the breakouts show on this slide, are there any questions on the differences presented here?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, this is Fran Dunkinson. Um, on the, uh, when you're saying there's no CDBG, uh, grant funding available and, uh, the first projection had an assumption of some funding there. Can you, uh, get me up to speed and catch me up on that process and what happened there? That there's not any, any C- CDBG grant funding, uh, presently uh, in the projection that you're making?
Uh, we were not the, you know, administrators of that grant process. So I would have to rely on city staff or maybe they need to rely on, um, engineer or another. I don't know who was running that, so I.
Okay, it's just that, did the city apply for those monies?
It didn't because the project we had to get going on the funding and the, and the CDBG funding was delayed. So that would have not worked for this project. So we, it would have delayed the project a whole nother. I think it was a year, year and a half, something like that. So we, we couldn't have applied for it.
Is that something we can apply for at a later date?
I'd have to find, I'd have to check into it. I'm not quite sure.
Something about the grant, they only have one or the other. So that's the age though.
SEH, I mean, that's a question we can, I'll come back and discuss.
Yeah, Eric discussed it, Eric from SEH discussed it in a previous meeting. Um, I believe we couldn't apply for it until after our project had been submitted. We, our project had to be submitted before we could apply for it. So the timeline of how it, and then we would have had to delay our project to spring of next year in order to get them. So it was a timing thing for SEH.
Okay.
They suggested that.
And the discussion at that time was, if we wait a year, we probably would lose the two million dollars that we gained just by virtue of the fact that the cost go up.
Escalate.
Right, so.
Yeah, it was a timing thing.
If we can still apply for something, you know, we have to do it, but I.
I guess that's a question to look at.
It already costs us eight million dollars for, you know, cause we didn't get it done. Couple of years ago instead of now, but.
The other item I'll add there anecdotally is those grants do stack on each other and the program grant, you know, what's identified as PF on the slide that you're looking at, um, does go down when you have an outside grant, outside program grant coming in. So you, you may notice the, the program grant went up. So in truth, the CDBG loss was not a million. You know, if you kind of compare the two, it's two point six in total grants versus two point one. So it's, you know, the loss of a half million and not a full million, uh, cause it's now, you don't have an outside grant funding source eating into your program funding. So, um, not that that's awesome news. I completely understand that. I'm just saying, there's a little bit of benefit and not that it's a hundred percent loss of grant funding, if that makes sense. Moving to the next slide. Uh, this slide is labeled assumptions. This is so you can understand the framework and context in which LRS is working in in order to build, um, the projections and ultimately come to a baseline recommendation for where the sewer rates would need to be adjusted to close on the loan. So the loan would be a thirty year loan. And, um, that is tied to a design life calculation where the engineer walks through an exercise identifying line by line asset additions from the project, how long they would be expected to last. And then basically coming up with like a weighted average of what the term of the asset life as for the project as a whole. So it was greater than thirty years. Therefore, the program does allow for a thirty year amortization based off of that calculation. You can do anything from one year to thirty years with the understanding that, um, you don't wanna issue anything, you know, debt, something that's gonna last longer than the service life. Um, but since this, as a project as a whole, you know, does have a design life greater than thirty years, the thirty year amortization will allow for the lowest annual debt service payment and therefore be able to provide the lowest sewer rate adjustment. Meaning if you were to shorten the term, right, the rate adjustment would have to be increased. Does that make sense or are there any questions on that, uh, term item?
That makes sense, I believe.
Okay.
I see that it says, uh, under the utility that no additional users were projected in this. Um, are there any, uh, prepay conditions on the?
On the loan? Uh, good question, yeah. So there is no prepayment ability. So kind of, and this is tied to the interest rate that you're offered. So this program offers you um, fifty five percent of market rate. And, uh, there's, it's a side calculation that basically says any aspects of the project that are not eligible for the funding. They still allow you to fund the project in full, but they give you a blended rate of that fifty five percent. So technically, you're getting ninety nine and a half percent of fifty five percent of program market rate. Um, but you do, you get, um, subsidized interest rates through this program. So the program is through the DNR. It's funded by the EPA and the EPA allows these programs to, you know, loan out loans at fifty five percent of whatever the current bond market rate is. And in order to do that, the program is also funded through, uh, loans that the state is issuing, um, not just the EPA funding. Um, and therefore they have to kind of keep the program funded completely through the collection of these principal and interest payments, and therefore they do not offer a prepayment ability. But you're getting, you know, fifty five percent of market rate, which you, you know, you could go get full market rate and have a prepayment ability. Typically, that's within after an eight year window of no call.
Sure, this, the, the, they require, they're, they're using a guaranteed revenue stream in order to fund the rest of the project.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why they, yeah, it's, you get a benefit, but at the downside of no prepayment. Um, you can, rare instances, and I'm talking, um, one out of every fifty that I work with. Um, rare instances, can you request prepayment? Generally, that's tied to, you know, we're years down the loan and we're looking to do another treatment plan upgrade and it just so happens there's some cost efficiencies or some other reason why we have to do the upgrade before the original loan amortizes. Sometimes the program will allow for either a prepayment on the old loan or early structuring on the new loan, so that your principal doesn't start until the next one's fully. Early structuring on the new loan so that your principal doesn't start until the next one's fully amortized, but. That's pretty rare, you kind of have to be in some financial trouble as well, um, the state just doesn't want that. To be the norm, again, this is pretty regimented program. That they would like the level P and I, no prepayment, you know, so that they kind of have their guaranteed repayment structure. The structure of this, as I mentioned on a previous slide, sorry, go ahead, was there a question?
My, I have a question, the, uh, so the interest rate at the date that we start this project. Is that five one twenty twenty six that we get the interest rate as of that date, or what? What, this is not an adjustable rate, uh, I'm assuming.
Correct, you lock in the rate actually at closure, which would be anticipated to be later this year. So you have some, you know, other standards you have to meet and documents you have to submit after bidding the project. To kind of get all the paperwork in order. And when you go to close the loan is actually when you lock in the rate. The program changes the interest rates quarterly. Generally, they're not more than, you know, ten basis points or twenty five basis points or a quarter percent at most. So they're, they're not moving this significantly quarter to quarter. In terms of when they're changing those rates, right now, your blended rate kind of comes up to two point two six four percent. So very low, if you were to go out to market right now, uh, you're probably looking at five, five and a half percent.
Even a tenth makes a difference on fifteen million.
It does, it does, yeah, uh, there's a benefit to, you know, securing it as soon as possible. Right now, that's kind of between the state and the engineers to kind of get it across the finish line paperwork wise. And then once they're ready, you'd be making sure that you have your rates in place and we'll kind of talk about that on our later slide. But yes, yeah, you are correct, uh, the one thing I will say is I have seen in some instances where. So they close on these loans either the second Wednesday or the fourth Wednesday of the month. If you were to be, you know, on the fringe of a quarterly adjustment change. We've gotten the state to sign the consent letter to lock you in at the rate if they know the rate's going to move up. So if you get to that point, it would just be a matter of, you know. Asking the state for that consent, um, if you're kind of on the fringe, um, in terms of your closure date.
Will they lock it in if you, if the rate goes down?
Uh, no, you can, they're pretty good about wanting municipalities to gain the benefit, so. They, they know ahead of time, right, if the rate's going to go up or down, they don't. Wait till the absolute last day to make their determination, they watch the market, of course. And they don't announce it until the last day, but they have a good sense of where they're going with the market rates that they offer.
This being in the presidential election year, the possibilities that we could see some significant market changes one way or the other, I think are. At least fairly. Possible.
I a hundred percent agree, uh, there's, there's some volatility.
Do you have a sense as to when the, uh, this loan might consummate?
I believe the goal is September. Part, part of the item. As well is your interim financing is not callable until November of this year. So you have to fall within that call window. I, L R S was not part of your interim financing discussion, so I wouldn't be able to, you know, provide recommendations or even speak to that. However, I can just tell you the context is, it is not callable until November, so. Part of it is you kind of have to wait on that too, but I know there's still work to do to close the loan, speaking to the engineers. So I believe right now the anticipated closure is September. For the, oh, sorry.
No.
Kind of still on this assumption slide. For the utility, so we're past the loan assumptions, but kind of talking about the utility. To speak to the rate adjustment needed at the time of closure. I want everyone to understand that this is done based off of the last fiscal year results as your baseline. And for example, there can be. You know, if you were to have some sort of large development tied to the project, which. Really isn't the case here, but if you were to have some sort of significant user, you do have to kind of time that out. But there's a reason we don't have additional users projected in our assumptions, because that's how the certificate of net revenues in order to close the loan is going to be completed. So as to say, the adjustments, should they have all happened, one, one twenty three, which is, you know, going to be the last fiscal year by the time that this loan closes. Should those rate adjustments been in effect? This is their net revenues available for debt service, which is above the minimum required amount in order to close the loan. So that's kind of how the calculation happens, but just to explain why there's no additional users there. In the analysis, and then for the fiscal sustainability portion of the analysis, we do want to project out, right? Because we're projecting for future expenditures, there's kind of the close on the loan number. And then there's the what should we do number? We did want to assume some inflation for your day to day operating expense, expenses moving to twenty twenty six. Given, you know, you may have salary increases, you may have other expenditures for cost of materials. And parts and things like that in your day to day expenses that will hit the books by twenty twenty six. So we don't want to recommend the absolute minimum, uh, because come twenty twenty six, if you're short, right now you're on default with your loan. So we do have two percent O N M inflation baked in as well, um, in order to project out. To twenty twenty six and provide those recommendations based off of something with some level of cushion and increase there. Moving to the next slide, that is labeled updated sewer future projection. This is the slide with the big graphic on it. This is the ten year cash flow analysis to not only get. You know, show kind of the recommendation to get over the finish line of closing the loan. Uh, but this is an identification of beyond that point, kind of anything else that may be happening within the utility to consider. And how this graphic works chronologically left to right, you know, from twenty twenty three through twenty thirty two. And then top to bottom revenues, this is cash revenues against cash expenses. Then in the middle there, you'll see the line that says net before debt service and capital expenditures. That is an all important number, because that number needs to be. To close the loan, a minimum of one dollar and ten cents for every dollar of debt service, which is, you know, debt service is shown below that. So that calculation, um, to see, to see what that ratio is, is at the bottom. That row called all in debt coverage. That's an identification of what that ratio is between revenues available for debt for every dollar of debt. And again, the minimum requirement is a dollar and ten cents. We would recommend giving yourself a little wiggle room, should you, you know, have unforeseen events on an annual basis in terms of operating expenditures. This could be main breaks, um, you know, other D N R investigations that need to happen, you know, sometimes they'll charge you like ten thousand or something. So we don't want to solve for the absolute minimum, this is what I'm speaking to when it's kind of like. Weighing the minimum to close the loan versus fiscal sustainability. And we would recommend shooting for something a little higher than the absolute minimum in order to protect yourself to. Uh, avoid future default on the loan. So that said, we arrive at kind of a minimum, uh, here through the ten year plan of. A dollar and fifteen cents for every dollar of debt service, as you'll see in that all in debt coverage row. In order to have that buffer. So moving back up to the top, what that adjustment is, is, you know, obviously we're not changing the twenty three adjustment that had already happened. But the eight and a half adjustments to get over the finish line. We basically have to double, um, now the project costs and loan amount, uh, more than doubled, so. Or excuse me, the loan amount more than doubled, the project costs about doubled, um, but the loan amount doubled, so. The cumulative adjustment before was seventy and a half. The cumulative adjustment now is a hundred and forty one percent, so. Kind of simplistic when you just think about the doubling going on and, uh, you know, how that. Number was arrived, but that would be instead of eight and a half adjustments, twenty one and three quarters percent adjustments to rates. In order to raise the revenues necessary by twenty twenty six when principal starts. And so we're projecting the annual debt service at the, you know, project bid amounts and, you know, the new grant amounts. To be about seven hundred and twenty four thousand and change, uh, moving into the future. Again, they structure this as level debt service, um, they do not adjust that. You know, just to kind of build over time or anything like that, so you're going to have this level debt service about seven hundred twenty four thousand and change. As a result of the project increasing. I'll take a breath there and just ask if there are any questions on the derivation of the new numbers in terms of sewer rate. Revenue adjustments and changing from the twenty twenty three. Okay. Hearing none, I will continue. Let me go to the next slide. So then we want to take those adjustments and identify what is the impact to an average residential bill? And this slide that I'm on is called sewer impact on average residential bill. We do show the water, um, just so we can build a full, uh, utility bill between water and sewer. Uh, as acknowledged in note five on this chart, um, the water rate study analysis was not completed. So again, this is just shown for discussion purposes only to kind of build that. But in the sewer, in total. You're looking at about a hundred and seventy, little over a hundred seventy dollars change. To a quarterly bill in order to close on the loan. And then we do show some, you know, every three years, uh, a small inflationary adjustment to kind of keep up with assumed. Inflationary pressures on O N M expenditures, uh, beyond the loan closure. Again, that wouldn't be something, we're not adopting a resolution for ten years of rates, you're adopting a future resolution. For rates in order to close the loan, but the impact of, you know, the hundred and forty one cumulative percent adjustment is about a hundred and seventy dollars. To a quarterly bill. The other item, sure, go ahead.
And, uh, this is Fran here, I have a question on that. So, um, what this, what you're showing is on a residential bill. So with the rate increase study, is that done on like an equivalent meter size? Basis, so bigger users with bigger meters. Pay a proportionately higher rate. Than versus just a, a, a flat rate regardless of meter size?
Yeah, that, that is a great question, so. The, you do have the option to kind of go to more of a full sewer rate study. This is kind of a revenue adjustment exercise in order to close on the loan or what was identified as phase one. Of our engagement, um, you certainly could go to phase two, which would be a cost of service study and rate design analysis. In order to find, you know, an equitable and fair mix, right, between your fixed and volumetric rate. Right now, this is flat increase to your current adjustments as depicted. However, you're correct, you could adjust that. Right now, if it's kind of flatlined, we don't do anything else but what's depicted. The only variance there, right, would be those larger users are using more, so they would be charged more based off the volumetric rate. But there's no real difference of equitability as it relates to the. Fixed rate, um, it would just be kind of attached, um, right now to the charges that are. Done on, you know, your quarterly fixed charges for the sewer utility alone.
Um, you know, just. I guess what I'm kind of, what I'm wondering about is the rate increase. Disproportionately going to the residential users. Uh, with the smaller meters than the bigger users, so. Uh, I guess the question I have is, if you have a two inch meter or four inch meter, when sewer rates increase. Is their increase going to be the same as the residential users or? Could, could it be proportionately done on a flat rate? For what the size of your meter is?
Yep, yeah, so all meter size, you know, you do charge your quarterly fixed charge for sewer by meter size. So that would go up, yes, and so right.
That's built into this then?
Yeah, yeah, if you did an adjustment like you did in twenty twenty three, the, you know, which was the thirty three and a half percent flat. The twenty one and three quarters adjustments each year would apply in a similar fashion, so I'll just explain that. Right now, the small meters pay fifty six dollars and forty three cents. And the larger meters, you know, like the next largest goes up to seventy four dollars and forty eight cents. And then the largest meter is twelve hundred dollars. So that, that same principle would apply if you're just doing the flat charge, you would be increasing all of those, yep. But you could look at, right, is, is that still equitable on a flatline basis? A lot of the times you find that is not the case, um, and actually the smaller users will bear a little less of that. So you could, you could go into a deeper analysis to see, is flatline still equitable or not? But we're, we haven't been green lighted for that.
I guess I'm just thinking, um, you know, the. Are the residential users going to be put in a position of subsidizing the larger users?
Sounds like it's the other direction.
Yeah, I think it's.
Or it's the other way around.
Sounds like it's the other direction.
If not consistent, it's the other way around.
Okay, that answers it then.
Okay.
Okay, I think you answered my question, thank you.
Uh, the other thing I'll say here is this, what's shown for this average bill is fifteen thousand gallons per quarter. So if you use less or you use more, right, you would just be applying, uh, what you feel your average usage is. To the column that says sewer volume charge and, um, you know, you could. You know, take the twelve dollars and eighty four cents and apply it to your usage, uh, to come up with your bill. Where the fixed charge, right, would change, presuming that you're a five ace or three quarters inch meter, so. Moving forward. Moving forward, the next couple of slides will go into, um that's, that's a representation of let's just look at sewer rates and sewer rates only. Um there are alternatives um that were explored. And the first one, so the slide that I'm on reads alternatives explored, W W T P and TIF or T I F. Um looking to see if, you know, you do have active tax increment districts within the city. Are any of the project costs within those existing project plans allocated to sewer treatment facilities? The answer was yes, um both to tid eight and tid nine. So we're gonna kind of speak to that here, um in which you could um, you know, say, moving forward, we will commit those um costs to the TIF district based off of what's in our project plan and therefore allocate tax increment revenues um towards this, towards the debt service as well, hence lowering the need for the sewer rates uh to increase as much. Um so in tid eight, is identified in the first bullet. Uh it was identified in your September fourth, twenty nineteen project plan amendment that there are eight hundred thousand of eligible costs for utility. Um, costs as a whole, which the paragraph within the project plan did identify sewer treatment plan. Uh costs, it also, I kind of left it vague to all utility components. Um but you could say, you know what, this is a large adjustment, we're gonna allocate everything, so we wanted to run that. Um if you were to allocate that eight hundred thousand dollars of costs. Right now, you would be at um a max appropriation annually of thirty seven thousand seven hundred and two dollars and twelve cents that you could appropriate to the principal and interest. Um, on an annual basis, um right now, your average increment revenue through the past couple of years has been fifty eight thousand uh one forty two. And your average costs, so these are existing costs going in to the district are fifty three thousand four sixty seven, so. Today may not be able to afford that um without additional increment, right now, there's really, you know, if you just kind of look at your current costs against current revenues, you only have a gap of about four thousand dollars. Your max appropriation would be about thirty eight thousand should increment revenue increase, but of course, you can't. You need the increment revenue in order for that to happen, so right now it's not able to afford it. Um but if you were to use that max appropriation and that increment revenue were to increase or be available, um that thirty seven thousand and change towards the annual debt service, you know, removing that portion of the burden to the sewer rates, that would reduce the sewer adjustment by five percent. But currently, the, to date, may not be able to afford that. It doesn't mean that you can't do it, I just wanna make sure everybody's kind of educated on how it works, you could make the appropriation and pay whatever's available. Um, but that's kind of, um if the max appropriation were to become available, you could reduce the sewer rates by that amount. Um, the next slide identifies what it would be for tid nine, so that was the other active district that identified utility uh costs with sewer treatment costs within it. And tid nine had a total of one and a half million of eligible costs based on the September fourth, twenty nineteen project plan. Um currently, the average increment revenue is a hundred and thirty nine thousand. Um your average costs are about seven thousand five hundred. Um, based on your uh the project plan amount of one and a half million, that max appropriation. Uh allocating that over time towards the debt on an annual basis would be seventy thousand and six hundred, almost seven hundred uh towards your annual P and I. And um if you were to appropriate that amount, um it would reduce the sewer need um for sewer rates uh by nine percent um to what was depicted earlier. So just kind of looking at how the district is performing now. Um, you know, you could do that, um however, the last bullet point as mentioned here, there should be a consideration for other upcoming projects in the district and um making sure you, you kind of weigh that against, you know, your, your impact to ratepayers, right? That's, that's ultimately a political decision of how you wanna allocate funds for the TIF district uh moving forward, so. Um you, you may have other things going on in the district that you've already planned um to allocate the aver- the available revenues. Um so you, you know, could not be available, but just in terms of where you've been performing and the twenty twenty four budget um for the district, um you would have um the ability to fully appropriate uh those funds, should you choose to do it.
What's the closeout date of TIF nine? You know?
Believe twenty years, I think.
Uh pardon?
I don't have any of that off the top of my head.
When was it?
Possibly twenty years, he just said twenty years possibly.
Yeah, twenty ye- twenty years is what we, what it starts at, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mixi's district is twenty five years.
Pardon?
Mixi's district is twenty five years.
Twenty five years?
Five years before.
So we've been, we've been doing it for, we've had TIF nine?
Nine was created, I think you extended.
Pardon? Yeah.
Twenty nineteen.
Um. Um I don't know.
I think.
Yeah, a- a- absent an extension, it's, you get twenty years of revenue. So the last year in the original project plan would be twenty forty. Um you may have extensions available to you at minimum, the standard extension, which is three years. So at max twenty three years of revenue would be available.
Assuming you don't do anything but play for your sewer for twenty years. I don't think that's a.
Nope, well, that's why, these are, these are all the options.
Yeah, yeah.
No, certain, yeah, it's a, it's an important balance, right, you have to weigh there, so. Beyond the uh tax increment, uh alternatives and opportunities. Um, the next slide reads alternatives explored, um pledging it as general obligation instead of revenue debt, you have the option to pledge it in whole or in part, um one way or the other. Um, which is a nice feature um that the state offers, um however, due to the inability to prepay, not prepay the loan, that's gonna stay against your general obligation debt limit for as long as the loan is outstanding, in this case thirty years. Um the benefit it provides is whatever portion in part or in whole that would be appropriated as a general obligation pledge. You don't have to prove the dollar ten cents for every dollar of debt service, uh you just have to prove the dollar. Right, you don't wanna levy a tax for this, of course, so you debate the levy. Um but you wouldn't need the coverage requirement. Um so there's a benefit, but uh the uh con or the, the negative downside is pretty harsh as uh you really can't navigate that geo debt limit for as long as the loan is outstanding, which would be thirty years in this case. So I did run it as, you know, kind of twenty five percent geo, fifty percent geo, seventy five percent geo, a hundred percent geo, just to kind of get there, and just looking at it, you know, that ten cent window. Um if you did fifty percent geo, it really only adjusts the rates five percent. Um you, you'd only be, really be able to lower the full rate adjustment by five percent. If you want a hundred percent geo, obviously, that'd be um ten, ten percent. Um, again, highly not recommended uh due to the inability to be flexible in the future. And that would uh kind of eat into that general obligation debt capacity without any flexibility to get out of it. Um you rarely see these loans as general obligation debt unless it's for um, you know, a regionalized sanitary district that actually gets the benefit of the quote unquote taxing authority of all the communities it serves. Um, that's really the only time you see these geo unless they're very small. Um and you're trying to avoid a rate adjustment and there is no um you know, concerns as it relates to general obligation debt limit, so um in truth, that, you know, it'd be hard to recommend that again, um certainly an option uh that we did wanna present um to the city, so you at least know that it's out there. So the next slide is our recommendations, um at least based off of where we were at when we provided this um to the city, and uh we can certainly take discussion um to look at other items um as necessary. But you, you should start to determine the timing for the rate adjustments. Um, huge benefit here, this is not the water utility and therefore you are not regulated by the Public Service Commission. And you do get to uh pick and choose more, you have a little bit more flexibility. So our analysis did depict, did depict a October first, twenty twenty four adjustment, a July first, twenty twenty five adjustment, and a what, uh January first, twenty twenty six adjustment um for all of those twenty one and three quarters adjustments that were depicted, so. We, you know, give it a year from the last time you adjusted rates, October first of twenty three, um and then kind of accelerated slightly, the reason being is you have to have the adjustment in place, you know, that forward looking resolution in order to close the loan. It is basically an exercise that by your first principal payment, May first of twenty twenty six, you will have the adjustments in place, so really as a quarterly bill or the last opportunity and in truth is that uh um January first uh date. Um and then you would adopt the resolution for all of those adjustments and you do have to do it for a resolution that is forward looking for all of them. Uh, you have to do it prior to loan closing. And typically, what we'll see is it's done on the same night that you are awarding the loan to the state, which is called your financial assistance agreement award, so that's where you see F A A uh in the third bullet point here, but um you would adopt the resolution um that night. Um the same night that you are awarding um the loan and that amount would be the amount in order to close the test, which is essentially what is called the additional bonds test, um to get into bond covenant talk there. Um, we would recommend um determining customer engagement, you know, this is a significant adjustment. We're not a public relations firm, but um you know, the city in whatever correspondence it determines um to let them know of, you know, why you're adjusting rates, given that we did provide the analysis. Um we are not just number crunchers, but we could provide some context behind the numbers, if you're looking to provide um some additional context as to why the rates are being adjusted, so we just wanted to offer that. Um but definitely, you know, engage your customers. Um and then the third recommendation would be, you know, at your discretion, if you did wanna look at um, you know, adjusting that fixed versus volume variance. Um you could look to move forward with phase two of the sewer rate study, which again is a full cost of service study and rate design where we're tweaking um the variance between those two, making sure that the rates are fair and equitable, so it's not just a flatline um adjustment there, that is what the Public Service Commission does on the water utility, unless you have a unique utility that does a third party cost of service, which we, you know, I've done through water utilities and uh but sewer utilities. Um we will do full cost of service and rate design studies uh for, and so we could do that. Um if you wanted to look at not just flatlines, um there. The one thing I'll mention as well is you can still keep the same revenue, you know, get to the same revenue amount and change the rate structure after that resolution um would be passed. Um so ultimately, the state just wants a guarantee that you're willing to raise the revenues. And then you can adjust the appropriation between the fixed and user charges um that you're charging, you know, at a later date, so no, you, you wouldn't have to do that by the time you you know, that F A award meeting, um you can do that in twenty twenty six or twenty twenty five, you know, uh later this year, whenever um you could do that. Um, and then the fourth item that we mentioned here is identifying any other rate making goals. I do believe in twenty twenty three, it was discussed, you know, potentially switching to monthly billing. Uh you can understand that that may provide some reprieve in terms of budgetary planning uh for individuals not waiting, you know, for the two hundred dollar bill um in three months, but be able to pay that over time through monthly billing. Um that truly should be uh weighed against the administrative costs um to do it um and or capacity um to do it um, you know, as well, so just kind of think about the administrative uh considerations there, but I know it was previously discussed, so I just wanted to mention that again. With that, um, you know, in truth, tonight's action, there's no required action, but just this was for discussion purposes to understand what the changes are as a result of the cost increases and making sure that we updated the analysis in order to identify what would be required in order to close the loan um on a sewer rate approach. So I can take any further questions or discussion at this time.
I have a question, this is Fran. Um, do you see any benefit to go to the expense of doing a phase two rate analysis adjustment? Going across the board, you know, versus a fixed volume rate, I understand that would be an additional expense to delve into it. Deeper, do you see, you know, potentially any benefit to us doing that or you know, just that it may not be worth the additional expense to go there?
Sure, um certainly a subjective opinion regardless of my answer.
I figured that.
Yeah, um, it's, it's more data to stand behind, number one, right? Um you're not just making a flatline assumption of, um these are fair and equitable rates because we set these rates years ago, um some point before twenty seventeen, right? Is the last time that you investigated, what is the fair demand ratio between the varying um meter sizes, um as well as customer classes. Um, so just kind of more data to stand behind there to say that we've developed fair and equitable rates. Um, the other item uh would just be an identification that you do have um the ability to tweak the rates as you feel it would be fair, so there's, you know, the balance of equitable and fairness. Um what we'll often see in communities is making sure that um, you wanna tweak any of those differences between the meter sizes and what they're charged ultimately, you know, kind of that equivalent C unit basis with large rate adjustments like this. Um you can present it in a manner that we are going ninety five percent of our results towards the smaller meter sizes, meaning we're actually gonna lower our equivalency um need to the smaller users because that hits the residential bills. Um where the residential class as a whole can't adjust their revenue source as easily as a commercial or industrial user, what I mean by that is it's not as easy for me to go out and get a better paying job in order to pay my sewer bill where a commercial customer or an industrial com- customer can increase. Where a commercial customer or an industrial customer can increase, you know. Their incomes by certain, you know, tweaking how much they're selling the widgets for, you know, tweaking how much they're selling. You know, food or drink for, et cetera, things like that. So the fairness. Argument you would have the opportunity to make that case to your users and present that as well. By conducting an analysis for that. So with that, I'll allow subjective opinion to rule the day on whether or not. You know, value would be perceived through that.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I guess realistically, what's our timeline? The expectation from us?
You, depending on when the loan, you know, gets buttoned up. Right now, at least it's my understanding that we're, the working assumption is. Looking to close September, you know, October timeframe is previously mentioned. So you'd likely have that award meeting. You know. Maybe August or September. Therefore, that would be the night that you're officially adopting the resolution. The other consideration would be. As you're letting time pass, is that enough time to get notice out to customers as well? So. You know, knowing that we depicted this on a October first, twenty twenty four as the first adjustment. You know, do you want to do that earlier just to allow for a greater time between when you've made your decision and when it'll actually hit the bills? So. You know, that's kind of a administrative exercise as well as, you know. Political exercise in terms of when, when you want to do that.
From a notification standpoint, if we're looking at raising rates on October first, we're going to want that in our newsletter that goes out with the July bill. So we're talking probably the second meeting in June would be the time that you're going to want to have that decision by. So we have time to get it in the newsletter to sign out with those bills in July.
Are we looking at monthly billing?
Not at this second. It's been discussed, but we haven't done anything with our water rate either at this point. So. Mind or showing, yes.
I have a question. So does the city file a simple rate case every year on the water side of things?
We have not filed a rate case and.
A simple rate case like the.
Any rate case and.
Oh, we did. We did.
We did.
Not last year, but we.
No, we haven't filed a simple rate case. I don't think since twenty nineteen. Or something roughly around there. It's been several years. So we haven't done one since I've been here and I've been here for three years. So.
I'm just think that's the one page thing where you pull it out the P S C report.
Yeah, and it was discussed. Last year, I believe, and. Was it, or was it this year?
Yeah.
Point.
Yeah.
I know nothing was done with it at the time. So.
That helps.
At the time, we were looking at seven million dollars, eight million dollars, not.
Well, it's just, I guess, just in my opinion, it's a good practice. It's a good way to head off. You know, maybe it helps with inflation. And it helps too with, you know, a, a, a big increase like this. So. Okay. So looking at sewer, if that hasn't been looked at since twenty seventeen. Well, if you do a simple rate case on water every year and what you get approved by the P S C for water, you also apply. To sewer at the same time. For a small incremental increase. I guess I just think it helps a little bit with the sticker shock when you get a big increase like this that goes out to the public. Especially since, you know, we've had inflation. So I'm just bringing that up as something to think about.
And that's why I'm asking about monthly billings that this is going to be such a chunk. Every quarter, we can get a, you know, smaller payments by filling out monthly instead of quarterly.
Well, the last we had discussed, we had talked about instead of doing a simplified rate case for water, we had talked about the potential of doing a full rate case. And then if we did a full rate case, switching to monthly billing at the same time. So that was where it was left.
It's kind of like how much change? Do you want to make a big change all at once or tackle maybe just one aspect of? Of, of the change of the new plant and the rate increase? You know? I, I don't know if it's a good time to go to monthly or. Do it all at once, you know, or, or to break it up into chunks, maybe to be more palatable.
Well, I think the other question is what's the effort level to get to monthly?
Right.
That it's not just, let's do monthly.
No, it's not.
So what's, you know, what's the effort level and what's? What's the actual timeline to implement something like that? That's.
I don't know if there's any regulations about switching to monthly billing from quarterly. I believe that was part of why it was being done as the full rate case for the water. Was why it was being looked at as part of that to make sure that we were in compliance. When we did it.
And I think it's got to be through the P S C.
I believe so.
Water, water certainly does.
Well, and that's why I think it was.
Well, yeah, but we're not going to bill water monthly and sewer quarterly.
No, but. But P S C does not regulate the sewer, he said, so.
Yeah.
We would have to change all of our tariffs. Yeah. And that's, that's a change to the, you know, structure. So that would have to be part of the water rate case.
And I can chime in on that too. Yeah, we, when we talked in twenty twenty three through this, this was done a similar analysis for the water utility. In twenty twenty three, but we do a lot of conventional rate cases and simplified rate cases for the communities we serve. You, just for context, the last water adjustment was completed April first, twenty eighteen for the city. That was done through a simplified rate case. So you probably got a three percent adjustment back then. When we talked last year, the plan was to see what your, your eligible based off of your annual report results. Last year, I believe we were pretty close and maybe even not eligible because I think you were right at the cusp of your rate of return. Which is the financial eligibility exercise. So the notes that we have from the city's discussion, when we provided that analysis in twenty twenty three. Was that you're going to look at the results of your next annual report to see where you landed. And then determine whether or not, you know, the simplified would be something to do. But correct, if you wanted to switch to monthly. You would have to do that through the context of a full rate case and not a simplified rate case. And. I definitely would recommend doing both utilities on the same billing cycle. Administratively, not to mention for users as well. It's kind of, that would be nightmarish to. Budget for, yeah.
Okay, well, we know when we have to have it enacted. And. We don't need any other action tonight. So I guess unless anybody else has any questions. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you all for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a final question regarding sewer. Did this come under the city thing as a complete surprise that our sewer system was going south?
It was. It was.
This is, this is about what, three years into this already? Or maybe four, it's more like four.
Yeah.
You know, the D N R regulate, after twenty years, we haven't started looking at your sewer system, so.
Is there a regulation that we couldn't, could not have started to fund for the new plan?
You can't.
They couldn't.
You cannot.
Yeah, you have, they have.
Until you have a process and plan in place, you can't, you can't do anything. Like the sewer rate adjustments, you cannot put money aside for it.
That dollar and ten cents that he was talking about.
Right.
Just within the last, what, year? We went below that. We were, we were at that level prior to that. And so when we started on this process. Two years ago and that information then came to us that. Said that we were, we were below, I think it was Fair Batch and it showed it in one of these.
Brian's still here. We have additional questions. He's still here.
Great. So I don't. In answer to your question, yeah, it's, it's been looked at, but. It's.
Nothing we've ever done. Okay.
Well, you can't tax for stuff.
The only thing you could have done is, is start the project earlier.
Yes.
And you're going back in your time machine.
Yeah, it would have been. Three years ago instead of last year.
Why can't we, instead of, you just can't.
Might save seven million dollars by building it two years ago instead of, you know, hard to say, but. Not being clairvoyant. It's a little bit tough. Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise we'll go on to. Tip number ten, project plan.
More numbers.
More numbers.
I'll try to keep it brief as I can. So I'm just going to go over the project plan. For tip number ten, I'm going to highlight the main points. If you have any questions as I'm going through it, just stop me and I can answer. So. The start in your packet, you'll see that there's maps in the back for reference. But TID ten is located in the eastern part of the city, near angry public school campuses and the south, south of the. So I'm going to start off on page one of the project plan, just to show you where we are in the schedule. Of the T I F calendar, we have already held the first. Journal Review Board and Plan Commission meeting. Those were just meetings to have the tax and jurisdictions review the project plan as well as the Plan Commission help with public hearing. Nothing big came up at those. We just reviewed the project plan and move forward from there. We are at May one, City Council Action tonight. So if you approve the, the project plan in the T I D tonight, it will move forward to the second Journal Review Board. Meeting and they have the, the final say on approval of the T I D. Moving on to page two, some of the summary findings. Just a couple of general ones. This is a mixed use. Did so at least fifty percent of the property in the T I D is suitable for mixed use development. Another item is that the city will not exceed the twelve percent of the total value of equalized taxable property within the city. I'll run over that a little bit later in the project plan to show you what the percentage meets for this T I D and where you'll be at if you create this T I D. With the mixed use T I D, you have to confirm that you will not have, oh, you will have less than thirty five percent. Of the land in the district as newly platted residential. We'll talk about that a little bit further in the project plan as well. It lays out some of your proposed newly platted residential properties. And public, public and private improvements will not occur but for the creation of the T I D. So that's your but for clause per state statute that now shows that. You know, the development that is proposed to occur within this T I D would not happen without this creation of this T I D. Moving on to page three, we have some project costs laid out there. We try to generalize these project costs as much as possible to give you wiggle room for anything in the future. So this T I D is a life of twenty five years, which. A lot happens from now until twenty five years as conversations you just had, you're potentially looking at grabbing some ten dollars for your treatment plan. So. We try to build things in to these project plans that gives you room to use funds, you know, if you may need. So you will see that we have sanitary sewer and water system improvements in there. Really everything that we have under project costs. Everything that could be eligible under T I D falls somewhere in one of those categories. That way you have the opportunity to use it for. Something if you wish. And these, these dollar amounts are also placeholders. You're not held to use only hundred thousand towards. Building improvements. Obviously project costs change also over the next twenty five years. So. That hundred thousand dollars in twenty years may, may mean, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollars. Those are just placeholders as well. I'm going to jump over to the equalized value test on page six. There's a table that goes over your project costs. I kind of break it out a little bit more, but otherwise the, the narrative for part is the main portion. So on page six. You have your twelve percent test. That equalized value as of January one, twenty twenty three is the amount of equalized value of the city as a whole. Twelve percent of that is your thirty nine million. The existing value increment that you have in your existing active T I D is roughly thirty million. And the proposed base of T I D ten is three point three million. So that puts your total value at roughly thirty three million and ten point three five percent. So you're under that twelve percent. Which doesn't give you a significant amount of room. To create another T I D. Obviously as T I Ds close out, that value goes down, but also as your. Equalized value and value increment of your current T I D increases, that also inflates that percent. I'm going to go to page seven, under item D, newly platted residential subdivision. This is where we kind of lay out what we see estimated for newly platted residential items. You're not held to these specific parcels, but it's just what we see currently right now estimated. So what we take is the acreage and divided by the total acreage in T I D ten, and that's where we're coming up with that thirty point two three percent of newly platted residential. That parcel one there is Woodstock Builders, which is the main driver for development, development incentive within this T I D. And the others are parcel three and parcel five. A discussion came up at the Journal Review Board and Plan Commission about the parcels that are located over by the school. Those are already platted. So those do not count towards your thirty five percent. I'm going to jump over to page nine. And your economic feasibility. This cash flow revenue production essentially takes what your base value of your district is, which was that roughly three point four million dollars. It includes development construction. So what we have estimated. For development to occur and the calculation is based off of the development that's going to occur for Woodstock Builders. So. You'll see that we estimated four single family units and three townhomes per year. Twenty five through twenty eight, and that's where you're seeing that two point two million in development construction, starting in year twenty twenty five. And then on page ten, that shows your total expenses that you're going to. Potentially borrow. It assumes debt service of borrowing a million dollars in twenty twenty four and eight hundred and twenty five thousand in twenty twenty seven. And that's at an interest rate of five percent over fifteen years. And that interest rate is included in the calculation for total expenses. Which is that column L. So in column N, you see December thirty first account balance here in the negative there for cash flow. But you see at the end of the life of your T I D in twenty forty five. Well, even before that, in twenty forty three, you're cash flowing with eighty eight thousand dollars. And. This is all assumed based on taking out the million dollars in twenty twenty four. And the eight hundred twenty five thousand in twenty twenty seven and the development occurring. So. Obviously, if you don't take out that much debt, more development occurs or less, those numbers fluctuate. The rest of the, the project plan just kind of goes over some different options for borrow, borrowing when you are looking to borrow against the T I D. And the, the back of it shows your maps there. So you can do projects within your half mile boundary of your T I D. Those parcels aren't gaining increment, but it still allows you the flexibility to use ten dollars within the half mile boundary. That's T I D ten in a quick nutshell. Any questions?
Your debt assumptions of borrowing the million and the eight hundred twenty five thousand, is that based on anything in particular?
Um, I think the million was just based off of potential, the Woodstock development. We don't know how much that's going to be. So we just kind of put some placeholder figures in there. I don't think it's looking close to a million for the city's portion, but. Yeah, that's just a max for what that is. And then just additional debt in twenty twenty seven for any additional projects that you, you might want to do. We try to show like, what's the max you could take out in debt and still have a cash flow with the potential for. We try to show like, what's the max you could take out in debt and still have a cash flow with the potential development that's gonna occur? Not saying at all that you would take out the one point nine million, but obviously just depends on the health of the Tid.
Some more fun reading.
Yeah. I hit all the main highlights points, so hopefully.
What's, are there any uh, C B D G funds available to? Or potentially available?
So that is separate from your Tid, but um. You can apply for C D B G. We'll kind of run over some C D B G stuff right after this, but I'm assuming you're. Questioning C D B G public facilities, which is the million dollar grant that you can get, um. You are qualified as community-wide to apply for that. Um, right now, um, those applications for those are going in in fifteen days, so you've missed this, this year's cycle. Um, you could potentially apply next year, but HUD is releasing new L M I numbers. Um, they're supposed, they were supposed to do it last year. They didn't. They will probably be doing it this July, this conversation that we've had with the state. Um, so I believe July one, new numbers will come out. And hopefully the city doesn't drop below fifty-one percent L M I. Hopefully you stay above it. If you do, you can apply for C D B G for community-wide eligible projects. Um, if you drop below it, you can still apply, but there would be a different process to go through to make, make you eligible. Um, for example, if you wanted to redo a residential street, um, and. You know, who were confident that majority of the users were low to moderate income that lived on the street. We would do an income survey process where we would survey the residents. If they wish, they could give their, you know, information on the, the survey and then if you hit that fifty-one percent for that neighborhood project, then you could apply.
And that uh, L M I is only to the folks that are. Takes into effect only the folks that are affected by the project?
Right, that would be if you drop below your fifty-one percent um, eligibility. So currently, I think the cities, I just looked at it for this um, next item coming up, you're at like fifty-three point one percent L M I. Um, which is in the, in the safe for applying for C D B G, but that's for community-wide eligible projects. So the project has to be deemed community-wide to benefit the entire community. So Keller Avenue was a community-wide project. He helped it with your downtown corridor that benefited the entire community. Water tower, um, a treatment plant, uh. We, we might have something else on that, though. There's other things to, to fund a fire truck, so, um. Yeah, that's what community-wide is, so if you had a project that wasn't community-wide, you could still go through the. The process, you would actually still have to go through the process of the survey, even if you are over fifty-one percent if it didn't benefit. Now the community as a whole, so.
None of the projects we're considering are gonna fit under the L M I category, I don't think.
Well, if they're community-wide projects, they count.
Oh, yes, but, but at least what we're looking at now for residential.
Yeah, you, you, you all have the best understanding of who lives where and what the income levels look like, but um. If there's a question of it, sometimes it's worth it to go through it. I mean. We've done a lot of income surveys and you can add a streets, a charter street to get to your fifty-one percent, so. There's a lot of, of different ways you can do it, but um. Yeah, it's a million dollar grant, so it's a, it's a chunk of change, so. Yep, that's C D B G.
Okay, so. Now we move to item eight. Resolution oh seven, twenty twenty-four, creation of tax incremental finance district number ten.
So this resolution would be you approving um. Tax increment district number ten. The city decides to approve this tonight. This would be the date of creation. It's a bit confusing because technically the joint review board has the final stamp of approval, but. You approve it tonight, this will be the creation date, um, and in there it says as of January one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and that's because if you approve the Tid prior to September thirtieth, it becomes retroactively effective. So you will gain increment as of January one, twenty twenty-four.
Missed that. Say that one more time.
So um, if you create the Tid tonight, it becomes effective as of January one. Well, creation date would be tonight. Increment starts being gained as of January one, twenty twenty-four, so.
You threw, you threw in September and it threw me through it.
You, you have to create it by September thirtieth for that January.
To get twenty twenty-four payable twenty twenty-five increment collection.
Yep. You got it.
I make a motion to approve resolution zero seven, twenty twenty-four, creation of tax incremental finance district number ten.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Duncanson.
Hi.
Elkin?
Yes.
Blatum?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion unanimously approved. Okay. Um, C B D G planning application contract.
That's what I talked about in my administrative report. This is to help us. A for um, comprehensive plan. And our trail um, corp, court plan, yep. And I'll let you just kind of.
Yeah, so Patty put the, out our fees for both the comprehensive plan and the corp. It crossed my mind when we were reviewing them, that the city could apply for C D B G planning. Um, it is. Most of the time not a competitive program at all. They set aside. A few hundred thousand dollars every year, um, and it's a rolling basis, so. Apply when you, when you want and you have to set up a pre-application phone call, which we did, um, I think on Monday with the state. And they basically asked what you were gonna potentially apply for, and they would give you approval to apply for it. They kind of mark out how much funds they have. That way they're not having, you know, fifteen people apply and then they don't have funds for it. Um, since it's on a rolling basis and it's not a competitive program like the P F program. Um, so. When I was, we were putting together our piece, I was like, there's, there's a lot of money that could potentially be left on the table, um, and you could get a grant for this, so. That's when I reached out to Patty about it, so obviously it holds the process. Um, because you had to pull the R P's back, you would have to put them back out. If you get this grant with um, C D B G section three requirements, um, but. Um, this C D B G planning program could pay for two dollars of C D B G dollar for every one of your dollars, so. For example, let's say that you have your comprehensive plan and your corp combine sixty to thou, sixty to seventy thousand dollars combined for the two of them. It could pay for roughly forty-five thousand dollars of that. Um, the city would put up the remaining match portion. Um, but that's what this grant would cover, so it would, it would give you. Some more money back that you were gonna use from your Tid fund um, to pay for those plants.
And that gave me some peace because I thought. That just frees up more money for the Tid.
Sure.
For sewer and we would probably use some of the Tid money for this so that it wouldn't. You know, affect our budget. Because that would pay for the difference if we didn't.
This will be able to fund our recreation plan also.
We just came up with a seventy thousand for the two, which is just a. Just a guess.
If you move forward with the application, we'll look at that a little finer. Obviously, we have to put in a budget number when we apply, so. But. I would say that's a. Seventy is a high figure, but.
And how many people applied on Monday? It was not very many.
No, I think they said they had three that had fully applied so far this year and a couple more maybe coming in. They said this is, of course, the, the most that they've had, but um. Angela from the state gave us the go-ahead to apply. She approved applying for the comprehensive plan and the corp. Said that, yep, we'll mark Amory down as, you know, if you are going to apply that way, they get three more calls this week, you know? Yeah, that way.
Okay.
Well, I think it definitely makes sense to do it, so I would um. Make a motion to approve the professional services agreement, I must say, to um. Work on the twenty twenty-four C D B G planning application.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and.
In the amount of four thousand dollars.
Motion's made and seconded to uh, approve the C B D G planning. Application contract in the amount of four thousand dollars. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So ordered. Slowly and exorably, we're getting to the end. Number ten, airport hangar J one lease. Uh, this was brought from the uh, airport commission. And uh, the reason that came, we had ended up with a special meeting. Because the uh, folks that wanna do this are hot to go to start building. So um, we have to approve each lease and this is just a. Basically a procedural matter, so he can get started.
Yes, this would be a newly constructed hangar, so if for whatever reason it ends up changing and not being a sixty by sixty. It'll be going back to airport to have the whole lease revisited. Yeah, this has written as an L, yes.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new year lease.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the. J one hangar lease. I don't know if we have to identify the leasing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
You're pretty cool today. That's what happens when you're going on vacation for a few weeks, you get right there. All in favor of adjournment? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned.